This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we will call the Board of Monory Select Board on May 14 at 6:02 PM. And all three members of the Board are present here in town hall. The first order of business when I amended the agenda, I got things a little bit mixed up.
Oh, no.
But the first order of business is Dennis' grant writing request, which if I understand correctly is a federal webinar and a state webinar for a total of two and a half hours researching the main road culvert.
Correct.
I'm definitely in favor of that. Are there any questions?
No hesitation if you want to.
There was another funding opportunity that was mentioned.
Well, I read them all online.
Called a raise grant for stuff for rebuild America. Infrastructure with sustainability and equity. That was mentioned.
Sustainability and equity because, you know, bridges are only for some groups of people. And roads are only for some groups of people.
That was recently awarded, I think, to Springfield. So it's for major transit related, you know, efforts to improve and, you know, and second on a growth.
Right, okay.
Major, mostly, but we'll look at it anyway.
I was gonna say, hard to say, like, I don't think we're putting it at bus terminal.
No, no.
I hope not.
But we'll look at it. One thing I did want to mention is the town was awarded the Pavilion Grant.
Oh!
Oh, great.
Cultural Council.
Congrats.
Mass Cultural Council.
How much?
It's thirty, well, this is for the feasibility study and basically design, preliminary design. Actually, it's gonna be final design. Thirty-three thousand. And we match fifty percent of that, hopefully from ARPA funds. So we're good for that. And the first thing they want is, in fact, a commitment of the funding. So.
Do you need a letter from us?
I'll, you know, look at what they need and I guess I'll work with Roger. We'll get that done.
Great. Congratulations. Great work.
Thank you.
Well, all of us are happy about that. It's been a warm, warm opportunity. Here's the award letter copy. And this is interesting and something that the Board may wish to consider. The idea of Senator Paul Mark, our state senator, has a bill that's looking for more money for cultural funding in my excuse. So they're looking for support. If it's okay to contact Senator's office and see what they're actually looking for, whether it be a letter or jumping onto some organization and so forth.
Yeah, I think as far as the ARPA funds go, we've already agreed previously that they could go toward the feasibility study match. But if you need something from us to reiterate that.
Yes, we have the letter of support from the Select Board in the application already. I don't think we mentioned the funding per se, but, you know, we can write that so to speak.
And just to kind of move through business as well, if there's, if there's no one opposed, I'm gonna go ahead and approve the request for the two and a half hours for the culvert.
I support it.
I support it. Okay, great.
Thank you.
And I think anything, Dennis, that you come across as far as funding the culvert is appreciated because that is definitely a project that we want to continue to pursue. Hopefully, hopefully MVP funding can increase because that seems like it'd be the most seamless way to do it since we've done MVP Phase one and two to get here. Or another grant that would be supplemental.
And help us to defray the eight hundred and however many thousands of dollars that we'll have to pay to meet the difference between MVP and.
Very good. I'm not being fooled upstairs.
You're not playing at the war of us to be dollars.
Yeah, I hope it isn't actually harp harp music. That would be depressing. I mean, I don't mind the occasional harp piece, but.
Yeah, you guys.
Hoping for something a little more lively.
And basically, the omnibus bill from essentially the governor, they call it the Mass Leads Act, is, is what we're looking for in terms of funding improvements to the MVP program. That's, that's part of that one-stop program that they have for seven specific categories, including rural communities, which is where we hope, we think that they're going to be increasing funding there. But we'll have to see. It's in ways and means, so it's, it's in a good committee and hopefully it'll be moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for the good updates and exciting news about the feasibility study.
And thanks for tracking what's going on with the bills because it's hard to keep all those balls in there. It's good someone's watching more carefully.
Yeah, I'm sure the Community Center Committee is gonna be happy on Thursday.
Yeah, very.
Thank you.
I'm right by sir.
Okay, elected chair, so.
I nominate Justin.
Traditionally, traditionally.
I nominate Justin.
I'm hiding. Sir.
Do not want to do it.
I really don't.
Okay, I'll do it.
Great, because in all honesty, you're way better at keeping track of the details and running the meeting than I ever will be. So I am very happy to have you, sir.
Okay, I'll do it.
We thank you greatly.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Thank you.
If you.
Please don't bring me to it, please.
Do you need an official vote?
No, I don't think so.
I think it's pretty clear.
Unless there's, yeah.
You're not taking a vote?
Okay, we'll vote. I vote Justin, yes.
Justin, yes.
You're not gonna vote for yourself?
I think it's really embarrassing to the town. I'm surprised that you.
What's that done?
Don thinks it's embarrassing for the town because I'm not taking the role, is what he said. I'm, I'm sorry you feel that way, Don. I think Justin does a great job of it and I'm very comfortable with his attention to detail. And I think that it will be done more accurately and professionally by him than it would by me. I'm very good at a lot of things, but I know from experience that, that like making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted is not necessarily my strong point unless we're talking about reviewing a document. So I, I think we will be better served by having him serve in that role because he's really good at it.
Well, thank you for the support. And it's a privilege and I'm honored to do it. And I appreciate it. The next order of business is a firefighter appointment, Scott Sheridan, who was a long, longtime firefighter for decades and is back, I presume. So I would move to appoint Scott Sheridan as a firefighter with an indefinite appointment.
I second the notion.
Is there any other discussion on that? A call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a unanimous approval for an indefinite appointment for Scott Sheridan as a firefighter. And thank you, Scott, for putting the gear back on. Much appreciated. So the next item of business is the Michael Germain conflict of interest. And Donna's, I thought Donna's, Donna's email was, was very helpful. Well, actually, when I talked to her on the phone, she was acting more like how I explained with having, with knowing someone in Mon, previously Monterey politics who came to a meeting that they had recused themselves from and then spoke on the other side of the table and ran into issues. In this case, Donna pointed out because Lake Garfield Working Group is an advisory group to the Select Board and it's all an entity of the town and the NOIs are coming from the town, there's not the issue with two masters. So there's specifically not a Section 17 problem because the Lake Garfield Working Group is a town entity applying to the ConCon, a town entity. As far as the personal financial interest, Section 19 says that financial interest is an interest that is not remote or inconsequential and is not shared with a substantial segment of the general citizenry. And Donna recommends kind of ten percent as the distinction. If ten percent of the town, of the public, more than ten percent of the public benefit from something or are affected by something, then it's no longer kind of a private, personal financial interest.
It seems likely the lake involves more than ten percent of the population.
Yes. So the way that I take all this information in is that as far as the appearance of, of conflict and also the ability to act impartial as a member of the Conservation Commission, I don't think that Michael should sit on the ConCon hearing NOIs that the Lake Garfield Working Group and he had helped prepare. But as I read it, and Donna says with certain caveat stated below, the citizen can sit as an agent for the working group in presenting an application for the NOI to the ConCon. So what I would think is that we would say to Michael, you can act on behalf of the Lake Garfield Working Group when the Lake Garfield Working Group makes applications to the Conservation Commission, such as the NOI for the drawdown. And we don't think that Section 19 prohibits this participation in the matter because such a large portion of the town either owns property right on the lake, has deeded rights to the lake, or, I mean, this is a little bit of a stretch, but I think it's, I think it's somewhat relevant, can go to the public beach and can launch a boat. So it's not really a personal interest at that point as far as Section 19 is concerned. So what I would recommend based on all of this, and Michael came to us again because we're the appointing authority. If it was an elected person, they would make their own decision, but we appointed Michael to both groups. I would recommend that if something from the working group comes to the ConCon, he sit and present and answer questions as a member of the working group and not participate as a member of the commission.
I'll concur and I'll add that to me, it makes a lot of functional sense for the person most involved in preparing the application to sit in the meeting to answer questions because he's one of the people that will be best prepared to answer those questions. But I agree, I think that it makes more sense for him to be there on behalf of the applicant as it were, rather than to sit on the ConCon.
I agree with that.
All right, so if there's a general consensus, I will let Michael know that when matters from the Lake Garfield Working Group come to the Conservation Commission, that Board recommends that he sit on the applicant side of the table as a member of the Lake Garfield Working Group to present and answer questions as a member of the Lake Garfield Working Group. But that we also, because of Donna's email, think that that is acceptable because the Lake Garfield Working Group is a town entity and also because under Section 19, a substantial segment of the general citizenry is involved in the same matter. So we don't find it to be a private financial interest.
Agreed.
All right, I'll let Michael know. So the next item of business is the mission membership of Lake Garfield Working Group. So sorry I got this too little late. But I thought we could just begin a discussion that, that really started at town meeting about what is the Lake Garfield Working Group? Should we start another board or committee about Lake Garfield to propose a line item in the budget?
Would it be under the parks, part of the that?
Under the parks budget?
Yeah, because we talked about not necessarily having a mill forward cost as a separate line item and putting it in the working budget. You know, is that a possibility to move it over there? Maybe we can expand it. Some of the working group could become part of that. Because a big part of the parks is what they do on the beachfront.
I think one slight miscommunication at town meeting was that the Select Board has already been seeking advice in the Lake Garfield Working Group about the mill flip for years. And we haven't always taken their advice, but even this year, they recommended, I think, you know, they'll take a vote, if I recall correctly, we think that fifty thousand dollars is right now. And this year, the Select Board and the Finance Committee cut it back to thirty thousand, but it was that process of getting a budget request and responding to it.
But we know moving forward, if you look at what Mike did and about what we're gonna have to do in studies, you know, should that be under the parks or should that be under a separate, do you just?
I don't think it would be under parks general because they have their own budget, which is, this is really not under the purview because the lake is not a park as far as the law is concerned.
Okay.
What we would probably do is if we're in agreement to put it in the operating budget, which is the direction that I'm headed, but if we as a board want to put it in the operating budget, what we would probably do is, is speak to the accountant and just see if they have an idea. If there's an account, if there's a good place to put it.
Well, I think you're, you're gonna have a couple of different categories for that, that budget. But you're gonna be doing studies and then you're doing mill forward removal. You know, those are different line items. And two is, you know, what Mike had said in the last time you met with us, you know, he's going over two or three years budgeting it out. So I don't know, you know, there would be several line that, you know, we could have a discussion or they could have a discussion about how many categories we leave under that Lake Garfield.
Yeah, I mean, I guess at some point, it probably is really a decision for the Select Board of how granular we want to be. We could probably call it lake health and maintenance. And, and put dash and put studies. And we could probably separate it out. The, the hard part about separating it out is then those, especially in our municipal budget, those lines are rigid.
Yeah, right, right.
So if you keep it more generalized, you lose some of the transparency, you lose some of that, but you gain flexibility in how you spend the money. Because maybe we did a study on fish last year and we only found out by the time, we only found out in May, let's say, after we vote on the budget, that the fish study went really well. We don't need to do a fish study the next year. So.
I understand what you're saying. We, because we see those kinds of sort of problems that the park.
And we don't necessarily, like, from my perspective, I don't, I, we don't really lose transparency. The only place we lose transparency is on the warrant at noon.
Yeah.
Because the information is still there, right? The, when the budget comes to us, it will be like, well, this much for this and this much for this and this much for this totals this much. So it's not like we don't see what the items are for, right? Like, yeah, when we, when we get the supplies budget from Jim, it's not like he's saying, you know, eight cans of oil and whatever. But he, if we asked him for it, he probably would give it to us. I don't think we want that. But, but when they're big items, he tells us and everybody tells us, right? So I, I feel like the granularity will still be available to anybody who really wants to know. So it's not like it's lost. It's just not on the warrant.
So what we'd probably do, if I'm understanding what everyone's saying, to maybe achieve everyone's goals, we could do a line called something like lake health and maintenance. And then we'd have sub-accounts that would be for our internal use only, which the public could ask to see and could know as part of the budget process, but it wouldn't be on the town meeting warrant. That would be diversist suction harvesting, lake scientists, other consultants that need to be hired, other specialty consultants. I mean, the freshwater muscle consultant is four thousand dollars. And that's just for freshwater muscles. As we move forward with potentially making an application for a permanent drawdown permit, maybe that's a special article. I don't know exactly how all of that would pan out. But.
I could see that being a separate, because that's not a recurring line item.
No, it would, hopefully.
Do we, uh, do we know from them, do they have what their budgets, what they've been paying?
For dash?
For everything.
Yeah, so.
I mean, that's, that's what I would work on. I'd just grab their budgets, see what they've been spending.
The vast majority, as I understand it, because I've seen some of the billing, we have a contract with a dash company that now offers more than just dash. They do limited mechanical harvesting, not like fuel, but instead of just going in and going to bottom and sucking weeds, they come through and cut the top, however many feet, and then do suction harvesting. Out of the fifty thousand in general, we're, we were spending the vast, the majority of it on dash and that company. And then a few thousand, five or 10,000 on the lake scientists. So we could go from there, but I also know that they could always spend more money, especially with these different consults coming up.
Yeah.
So, and dash is somewhat modular in that way where if we have, they can set out and do, they're gonna do three days of dash. And that might not get all of the dash that they could do in the lake. But it's kind of like crack sealing. We have fifty thousand, fifty thousand for crack sealing. Go crack seal how much you can do. We have three days of dash. Go suck however many weeds you can get out. We're not gonna get every one.
I have a question. Friends of Lake Garfield, one of the work fund people said they make donations to them.
Lake, Friends of Lake Garfield is a nonprofit organization, separate from the town. And they do certain things to promote lake health. It's not always been clear to me who pays what. I've never felt like we can make demands from Friends of Lake Garfield.
They can't. It's a nonprofit. You know, that's why I trust like a demand from the parents.
Yeah.
It's even more. The question though is that if the, if that Lake Garfield Working Group becomes more under the town budget, what can the Friends do?
But Lake Garfield Working Group's always under the town budget.
No, I know, but if it's, if it's more like all of a sudden it's a line item. It's different when they've got like our own budget.
It could get free. We can't take money from the nonprofit.
Precisely. So if they.
What happens with the library?
Yeah, so it's just, I mean, the library, Friends of the Library support things that are not on the budget. And some of it is, we're still working on a problem with the noisy air.
With the what?
The air handling?
The air that comes into the nineteen thirty-one room is, it's loud. And you notice it when it goes off. At eight o'clock, it goes off or nine o'clock. Whenever it goes off, it's like, oh, it really was loud, you know, and it confused. So we're, we're working on getting, that's an expensive item. Really being a lot of engineer, we finally got somebody who'll work on it. And so they're supporting that. They also support programs because the library does not charge for any program that we have, the library. And so they support those things. So the Lake Garfield, the Friends of the Lake Garfield could support things that are outside of what the, the town is gonna handle. Now, the town can say we're handling health and maintenance, but there may be some other things, you know.
And, and let's face it, let's say the town allocated fifty K for suction harvesting, but they.
They wanted to go further.
They wanted to go further. They could chip in twenty ten and say we're paying for another day or another whatever.
We'll pay, you know, the Friends of the Library are gonna pay, Friends of the Library, Friends of the.
Do they do that? Like, we used to have the.
Lake Monterey.
Lake Monterey, Lake Day.
There was something similar to that during the one hundred and seventy-fifth. I actually wasn't here. I think it was not called Lake Fest, but there was an event at the lake.
Yeah.
I think in general, the reason why I kind of avoid the topic of Friends of Lake Garfield is just because we can't set expectations. So almost we need to act as if they aren't there and say, what does the town want to do? What is the town's budget? If Friends of Lake Garfield decides to chip in and go above and beyond, that's so welcome and appreciated. But we're never gonna ask them to do that.
You ought to do that. You can't.
So, and as, yeah, as you're saying with the fire company, we can't ask. So all that being said, what I'd like to do, we have currently seven members on the Lake Garfield Working Group, six in the alternate. I heard after the meeting, John Levin wants to be on the group.
I think he'd be a great member. And that's having somebody that's not on the lake.
John's on the lake.
He's on the lake.
Right on the lake.
You should have somebody that's at least.
Well.
Steve Snyder is on the lake.
Steve isn't on the lake.
Okay.
Kyle doesn't live on Lake Garfield. Trevor Hurst does not live on Lake Garfield.
Okay, yeah, that are, that are.
Dennis Lynch doesn't live on Lake Garfield. So really, out of seven members, we have three that are on the lake. And John does live on the lake. All that being said.
Well, there should be, it should be a mix.
Yes, and essentially we have that.
Yeah.
I think as we make our fiscal year appointments for this year, we can return to the list as we always do and say, do you have any active members? Do you have people who want to continue? Do you have inactive members? Are there other people who are interested, maybe even the people that were most interested at town meeting? And then when it comes to the mission, there's three parts to the mission, lake health, safety and accessibility. Except, and then it says, separate working groups shall be impaneled to address safety and accessibility. This is back from 2016. I don't think that ever happened.
Where did it say separate?
In the first paragraph under the Lake Garfield.
Ah, I got you, okay.
I don't think that ever happened. I think what we should do is probably set a narrow scope for the Lake Garfield Working Group that doesn't look at how fast motorboats are going or what swimmers are doing or the beach or the boat ramp, other than to the degree which lake health is a priority. So if they mostly just focus on lake health, looking at the plants, animals, water quality, fish that live in the lake, the water that's in the lake, and then make recommendations to the Select Board, prepare permits and applications for ultimate approval by the Select Board, discuss strategy and long-term goals, you know, and consult with the Select Board as they go along. But only focus on that because that's essentially what they've been doing.
My only, I think the only caveat here is that it's part of the OSRP, the Open Space Management Plan. There was a lot of feedback from people about, I'll call it, boating behavior. That's a little too general, but basically, big wakes, high-speed boats, jet skis, both from a safety, series of safety concerns, but also from a health of the lake concerns. There could, the, the high wakes cause erosion and damage to edge communities. And although there is the lake health part, there's also the safety part. And I, I don't wanna see that concern get lost because if no one's in charge, no one does it. So there, there's still outstanding questions of exactly, if we wanted to have a speed limit, for example, on the lake, how would we get it changed from the like general one for the state? And who would enforce it? There's a lot of questions about whether it's enforceable or how you even tell people what it is. But if no one is charged with doing it, it's not gonna happen.
So, so a little bit of history, I think, and Mickey, can you confirm that one time the town meeting voted to ban jet skis? And, and the state said you can't do that?
So it appears, that got brought up, that got brought up. It appears that the reason the state said that is because at the time, there were still the ongoing issues with the boat ramp. And that now that that's been resolved, we would have standing to approach the state to address this other issue. That's, it seemed to be that that was the general thinking on it. I don't, I did not personally investigate it, but that was the, those were the opinions expressed by people that remember the whole scenario when it occurred and the following outcomes. So whether that's true or not, it seems like it would be worth investigating to find out. Like, I don't think we just put it on the work. I think we'd have to find out what would we need to do if we wish to do this? What hoops would have to be jumped through? How do we, do we approach the state and ask them? Do we pass a bylaw? What do we do? But somebody has to take that on as their, you know, cause select.
Yeah, so, and then to, to go a little big picture. Yeah, so, and then to, to go a little big picture, as far as safety, I think what I've heard before is that there were harbor masters who were out on the water all the time. I think you have to basically rely on a volunteer, or maybe with the site end, but basically someone who's gonna be out in the water five days a week, seven days a week, by their nature.
They're already out there.
Yes, and there's a few people who leave pickleball things that might be good candidates in town hall.
Who, Brian is a harbor master.
Understood, but we.
But he's not out on the water?
So here's the problem.
Right, you have the deputy.
We've had for a long time a police chief. We've put the police chief as the harbor master, which they can only do so much because they're policing the, all the square miles and people in Monterey on land.
Dean, Dean was the harbor master for a long time.
Yeah. So I think in terms of getting someone to enforce kind of the no-wake zones and boating rules and etiquette, we'd have to basically recruit someone who's already out of the lake lock because we don't have a huge budget to fund.
So how, I agree, the question is, how do we recruit that person? Do we write an article in the Monterey News?
No, I think, I think.
Do we send a letter to all the butters?
We basically know of, of small handful of people who are, who really care about the lake, and they stand up at town meeting, or maybe they don't stand up at town meeting, but I think we would ask just through word of mouth, people who live on the lake and spend a lot of time on the lake.
The Friends of Lake Garfield, any of them, down there anyway.
So that's, I think, and I think that this is something that has come up over the years, and it's just really about finding the right person. Because without finding the person that it really already fits for, we're never gonna make it. Make the shoe fit if it doesn't.
So find a person and say you're the harbor master.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have ideas of people in mind.
And say, are you willing to serve?
Well, yes, because, because you're, you're, you have to find somebody who's willing to go chase somebody down and tell them to get off the lake.
Or to behave themselves.
Or to behave themselves.
Or to issue a ticket, or whatever is required.
Yes.
Or just to talk to them nicely the first time.
So I have people in mind, definitely, that might be good candidates, but it's like anything, it's, most people don't wanna add more to their already busy lives. But I think that would be the way to go as far as safety. My feeling with the Lake Garfield working group is, yes, if it affects lake health, they should do it. But if we expand their scope too much, I don't know how feasible it is for them to really.
Involve a lot of it.
And over, and, and, I mean, even with, you talk lake health, you're talking about Dash, N O I's, lake scientists, consultants, how much money, et cetera.
Do you think it's a reasonable ask if someone was willing to serve as the harbor master in the, in the guise you're imagining, to say, would you be willing to take on as part of that investigating what would be involved in getting a speed limit on the lake or banning jet skis because it would then fall to your purview to enforce it?
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes the same person who's good at one isn't good at the other, but sometimes the same person is willing to do that.
Yes, we can ask, I mean, I think it's the right person. I don't really have any interest in banning jet skis as loud as they are. Respectful riders don't cause problems. It, for some reason, it seems like in general, they're a little bit more likely to not be safe.
So is, so is the thought that the Lake Garfield working group would essentially become like the Lake Garfield Committee?
None.
And they would be, and there, and there would be a budget that was in the town that they would be responsible for? Like the Parks Commission, or the Board of Assessors, or one of those other commissions that isn't necessarily under the guise of the town administrator?
No, I, I don't think so. The, so the boards and committees that you're mentioning are elected?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a good idea to make the Lake Garfield Committee, or Board, or whatever term we choose to use, elected just because we have such a hard time filling the elected seats that we do have.
It's easier to fill it.
So there would be, so there would be more of like a, like a, like a consultant?
Well, basically, what they have been has actually been really effective for the most part. There's a few minor tweaks. I talked, I talked to Mike after town meeting, and actually just today. Basically, what Mike's been doing and what the Lake Garfield Working Group have been doing is really what's needed. They coordinate Dash, they coordinate the scientists and the consultants. Because of this drawdown issue, there's gonna be a lot more involved. Because now Dash is probably gonna be an operating line, it's gonna change slightly, but they've been submitting a budget to the select board and the finance committee. I really don't see the Lake Garfield Working Group changing that much. I would like to clarify and reapprove at a future meeting the mission statement that doesn't say, here's three functions, but the other two are, are gonna have separate committees. I would rather just say, these are the functions. Whether we decide to put some level of safety in there or not, my thought was to keep it pretty narrow, to make sure it's clear that they are spearheading the drawdown. And also to make sure it's clear that they know, which they really do, that it's an advisory working group to the select board, which does a couple of things. It's just a check and balance, right? So that we don't have a working group that kind of, it's just a check and balance. Because there's certain things about the lake that are kind of a political lightning rod, and sometimes the select board might be more in tune with those. The select board's also just a different, different body. And for the most part, the Lake Garfield Working Group really does manage Dash, they really do manage lake scientists. But, you know, what if five years down the road, ten years down the road, they wanted to put herbicides in the lake? The select board would just be a check on that. And maybe at that point, town opinion has changed. Pretty much every time it comes up as a special article, as a citizen petition, it gets overwhelmingly voted in favor to, to non-bindingly banned herbicides. So as the select board, I feel like the select board sees that non-binding vote and gives it a lot of weight. Which hopefully Lake Garfield Working Group would do as well. But I just think it's the right fit for our situation, rather than making them a separately elected board, especially because we just have a harder time in the lake, those seats.
And you already got a group.
And, and we gotta, like, if it ain't broke.
Yeah, they're not broke, which is, but I think.
Is there any group similar to that? I'm just trying to think off the top of my head.
To Lake Garfield.
Like a, like a Lake Garfield Working Group.
So renewable energy is similar. And a lot of our community center committee, the things that they do, they have their own budget, but they are at the end of the day, to a degree, I wouldn't really call them ad hoc, because an ad hoc gives the idea that it's temporary. But they serve exclusively because the select board created a community center committee. I don't think it's ever been voted by town meeting. And at the will of the select board. As opposed to a library board of trustees, which is separately created and elected, or opposed to an appor- appointed commission, like the Conservation Commission, which is appointed by the select board, but really reports to the law.
Yeah, to the state, yeah.
And has a D E P state level that is over, so it's.
Well, that's why, I just wanna, so, go back to your point about the herbicides. You know, right now, there's a conversation because the thirty thousand or fifty thousand dollars is voted as its own separate article for milfoils, so people can stand up and have a conversation. But once it gets put into the budget, if, you know, who's, who, who actually puts, it's, it's like the, it's like the Parks Commission comes and says, you know, they wanna buy, you know, X number of things for their, their, for a park. So if the Lake Garfield Working Group says, well, we wanna go out and buy a, you know, a canister of herbicide, who puts, who, who puts the kibosh on that? Because it's not actually coming in front of the select board.
No, it's just.
They have to put the budget.
They have to, no, it's not a budget thing, as far as I see it. They have to, and a lot of the ConCom, and the select board is the signature. So that's why you keep the select board as advisors, I'm sorry for getting a little bit.
No, 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 I think, no, I think it's a good.
I think that's the gist of it, is it's a delicate balance. Maintaining the lake is both one of the most important things that we do in a way. Like everyone said, it's such an important part of Monterey, and it's this delicate balance. And to create an elected committee that could go off and do its own things, it's just, at the end of the day, having that check and balance, I think is good. Any herbicide use would need to be, as far as I understand, approved by the ConCom. The way that I would set up the mission of Lake Garfield Working Group, all of the permitting, applications, contracts that they would recommend would be for ultimate approval by the select.
Because I, you're right.
There was about a few years ago about that.
What about, not using, yeah, and it's come up more than once, and it, yeah, it's pretty resounding every time.
Basically, anything that happens.
Yeah, but there's a few people think there's a, there's a diehard group of it. They would like to use it.
There are people who would like to use herbicides. But there's a lot more people who would rather.
But, but because of the lake itself and the, and the nature of the fact that the water body, the wetlands around it, it has to go through ConCom, essentially no matter what, right?
Yeah, so as I understand it, Stevens Lake uses herbicides in Monterey, which is entirely in Monterey and Lethual, which is split. And they went to the ConCom last month and got asked for, and I believe received, and you can ask someone on the ConCom if you want, received permission to use herbicides, it seems like. And actually, I think they've been doing it for decades. So, but even they have to go and get approval for it, so.
So that's your check and balance, as you've been saying. It's, it's a, it's a group of people who, their, their, their check and balance is the ConCom, but yet there's a town budget that supports whatever their desire, whatever their requests are, if, if it's a financial request.
It's a financial request, but also there's a select board that signs off on the contract. So, and this is, it's, it's almost just how it's been working. It's almost not broken. I think it's a little bit broken because it's been living in this limbo. Where it's a special article, we're not sure if the Lake Garfield text is, or she's gonna take on, we're done with that. So now let's clarify it and say, in my opinion, put it in the budget. And this is what the budget is, this is the mission of the Lake Garfield Working Group. This is when the Lake Garfield Working Group consults with the select board or gets final approval. Basically, everything the working group would do as far as strategy or major decision-making would be for final approval by the select board.
And because they're an advisory group, they're advising us, but they don't necessarily have, they don't have the power to go do it without our signing off on it, I guess.
Maybe.
Couldn't you just say that the select board at this time, because of the feelings of the whole town, does not approve of herbicides? Don't even think of putting it in your budget.
The thing, the great thing is, Mickey, there's people on the Lake Garfield Working Group that even if they personally would like to use herbicides maybe, and that's what they think is the best way forward, they are conscientious enough to know that the town has spoken that way. And I will speak.
And that's today.
I will speak, well, I will speak very favorably upon the working group to that degree, where they've really worked with, and they strike that delicate balance that we're, that we need to find.
They've all done a nice job since.
So right now, they've got fifty thousand dollars. For this, just clear, they've got twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents left for this fiscal year, and then the thirty thousand that comes up.
Yeah.
So they've got that much to play with right now.
Yeah, so.
So it's kind of like a little budget.
Here's what we'll do, we'll come back at the next meeting. If it's all right with everyone, I will review the mission statement, taking into account how speeding boats may play into this. I'll take a look at it with Mike, propose some, maybe a new mission statement, especially just to clarify basically what we're already. We'll talk about a line item and whether it's one or more line items with one or more sub-accounts. And we'll look for a harbor master. I think if the word of mouth thing doesn't work, we could certainly pose to look for someone who's really interested in it. I think also whoever runs into the current, whoever runs into the police chief, just be.
I will, if I see.
Yeah, just let them know that, hey, we're, we're kind of looking for a harbor master. And it's nothing wrong or bad that he did. And it's always been a situation where we, we've never expected a police chief to be out on a boat every day. They were just, we don't even offer them a boat, right? So. I think if we find the right Dean Amadon, if we find the right Dean Amadon, and it's a good situation, let's.
Making any more of them?
Capitalize on it.
We can tell the police, they're assuming him a kayak because it's part of his physical health, maybe.
He said he wanted to lose some weight.
So, so that's how we'll move forward, and we'll probably have this on the agenda as well for just the very next meeting and continue the topic.
And thanks for doing that.
Yeah, yeah. The letter to legislative representatives for the recall special act. I think it's pretty standard, Donald drafted it up for us.
I read it. Should I just go ahead and sign it?
Yeah.
I mean, I've already read it, so.
So we're all agreeing, all we're doing is forwarding the recall special act to the legislature for, we're asking if it can be approved in this legislative session, and if not, it should be filed in the next. For talking with town council briefly at town meeting, I guess one of the hangups, and also from the email from Smitty Piggy Kelly, is once it's filed twice, it can't be filed again.
Right, that's why we had to.
So now this goes to the town clerk, and the town clerk?
So that letter should go to the representatives. What we need from the town clerk, can I just see it for a second? What we need from the town clerk, so it can't necessarily be mailed yet, is a certified copy of the vote and the draft text of the special act. So the text of the special act is right in the warrant. And a certified copy of the vote will be available once there's certified town meeting minutes. Sometimes I think that takes a week or a couple of weeks. So I don't think Chris has them done yet, and I wouldn't be surprised, that would be completely normal to not have them done yet. But once they're done, they should be included, a raised seal copy, I believe, should really be included by Chris, so. And if he has any questions, just ask on or ask his state people. But we need basically an official copy of proving that that vote happened at town meeting, which we were all there, so we know it happened, but the certified meeting minutes are proof that it happened. So the next couple of items are just kind of things that came up at town meeting. I don't know, in particular, if we have real action items on them tonight, but I just wanted to touch base, see where we're at. So the first one is the annual audit.
Yes, so I talked to Eric Kincher, Kincher, the accountant, and Sarah Hunter, the treasurer, about that. And it actually ties in to something else. It ties into our loan for the, for the, for the fire truck. So Eric and I went online to the M M A website, and we, the M M A has four, four or five, actually, one of them's his company. But there's three different companies that I'm gonna reach out to and see if they're, get some cost from them. One of them is called Roselli Clark and Associates, and they've actually been sort of moving into the hill towns, and they've taken over several of the Scanlon accounts, more like a little east of us. So I'm gonna reach out to them, as well as the other ones, just to get some pricing. But in talking to, in talking to Sarah Hunter, she said that we're, we've reached a, a level of borrowing with, for the fire truck, that, and I would, actually, it has to do with a million dollars. So basically, from what I understand, there's essentially like three different levels for borrowing. There's below five hundred thousand, there's five hundred thousand to a million, and then there's a million and more. And with five hundred thousand dollars, you just need to get this thing called a, a green light letter from the bank and all that that says you're, you're good to go. But when you get to a million dollars, it becomes a bond issue. And we actually would have to do a bond, which requires us to have a bond reading, which we don't have. So.
So do we not borrow the million dollars that we just authorized to borrow?
Well, I guess what we could do is, I have to talk to her, is we could try to see if we could put free cash towards it and bring that million dollars down, and what that means.
But we would need to go to town meeting.
We would need to go to town meeting for that, and say, here's the two hundred thousand dollars, we can do it. So, but what it means, since, since it's gonna take two years to get the vehicle anyway, she says it's usually, it takes about two years worth of prep because you have to get a couple of, you have to get a couple of audits under your belt. And you have to have those yearly audits, you have to actually have a. And, um, you have to have those yearly audits, you have to actually have a cash policy, written cash policy.
We think we have a cash policy.
I think it's there too somewhere, I have to go through and look, and your outstanding receivables have to be low, I mean, they're probably pretty low for us. And she said those things over a couple of years would, um, would probably be okay for us, and we'd end up with a bond rating.
So here's my question, we did annual audits, I think it was from around twenty seventeen on.
Except for that one year.
The policy had been every three years, if I'm not mistaken, or something like that. But we did annual audits in part because of this exact concern, if I recall, when I wasn't there at the time, but from what I've been told.
What was the original loan for the library? Pardon? How much was the original loan for the library?
The first one was, uh, one million, nine hundred and twelve or something.
How did we do that in the time?
And.
It's a little, it was heavily complicated.
Yeah, it was because it was to cover the the library what the town was, had, was responsible for, plus we were getting the state grant in over five years. But because of the work that we did, we had already gotten three years' worth in the first year, so when we went to borrow, there were only two of those outstanding, but those two had to be in that loan.
So they had to borrow some of the money that they knew they were getting from the grant.
Okay.
So technically, they borrowed one point nine million.
Right.
But in reality, how much did the town?
One point two.
One point two, so seven hundred.
But that still would have been over the one million, so why didn't they have to do a bond?
I, I was, I was, that's what I had my hand up for, oh, sorry. So I can remember, there was one year when we were going to do the hundred thousand, like maybe a hundred thousand, and the finance committee was saying, well, you know, maybe we want to get a grant, and the balance right then was like one million, ninety-two thousand, five hundred, something like that. And so instead of paying off a hundred thousand, they only paid the ninety-two five, so they could kept a million in case they wanted to get a bond. But it, so we kept the, the million, but we didn't want to get a bond, so we just kept getting the, the loans.
So it was actually.
But it's, it's an, it was an option, not a requirement.
But it sounds like we're being told now that if you want to borrow a million dollars, you have to get a bond.
I, what I've been told previously, that I'm almost certain I've been told, is that if you want to borrow more than a million dollars, you can get a bond. And that's part of the reason we're doing annual financial audits.
Yeah, so you have the ability to, but you don't have to.
Not required to.
But here's my other question, because I've al- I've been told before, and maybe I shouldn't trust any of that, but but that you had to do annual financial audits for a certain number of years in a row. So.
That's what she said.
How many years?
Two.
So which fiscal year? Because we, we did them for something like somewhere in the neighborhood of five years in a row?
But we've missed them.
I think probably the two.
So what's the deadline, I mean, what's the deadline, are we supposed to have done? Cause we could go back and do twenty, or what's the last one we did, fiscal year twenty, we could do fiscal year twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-two.
Yeah.
And fiscal year twenty-three, and then we'd have three kinds of areas.
Yeah, that's what she's, that's essentially same, we have to find somebody that's same to it.
Because as of July one, we have funding available for, is it two audits?
Just one audit.
No, two.
Two, because the current one, the previous one that we held over.
I think we might have funding for the three.
No, we'll have to, we'll have to see, I'm not totally certain.
Because it's the money that never got used for that one?
Yeah.
And then we only, because we only put one.
Two, it's two, you're right, so we have money for two audits, I know we have money for two audits. And here's why, because we left money in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
For an audit.
Yeah.
This, in this fiscal year, we, we, we transferred, but we transferred money to next fiscal year. So.
No, for, for this fiscal year, we only put a thousand dollars.
No, that's FY twenty-five, FY twenty-five.
No, 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 I'm going to say this fiscal year, I'm not fiscal year twenty, the one that we're.
Four, twenty-four.
Four, that's a four, I thought we.
We had money in the twenty-four budget to do
Yeah.
an audit, and then we have the money held over from the previous year plus the thousand dollars to do the FY twenty-five audit.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good example, that's a just not.
No, from everything we've been told, we have the two, we have the two, we had the like thirty-four thousand.
Two years, right.
We had thirty-four thousand, and we're bumping forward half of it to next year, that's what we voted on at town meeting. So half of it should still be available in fiscal year twenty-four. The question is, if we don't spend it in fiscal year twenty-four, can we encumber it?
God, can we please just spare the parents?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to the accountants, because everything that we're talking about doesn't make any municipal, municipal financial sense to people, I'll talk to the accountants about it. Because you can't, you, you can't hold over operating budget money fiscal year over fiscal year, it has to be spent within a month or so of the end of the fiscal year.
Yes.
So if, unless like we did what we did, we took a thousand dollars, we made a thousand dollar budget, and then we said, we're going to take this seventeen thousand dollars, we're just going to move it over.
That, yeah, because we voted.
Because we voted, it's, it's the other meeting, because the, the other fiscal year, because as far as I know, there's no encumbrance anywhere that says there's money available, there's seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars available, as far as I know, I haven't seen anything, but I'll talk to, I'll talk to.
Well, that's always what we've been told.
Because that's not my understanding how.
It's not, but, but Roger.
It's not from this year, Roger.
We've talked to Sanesfield and Numalbra, who also use Scanlon.
Yeah.
Remember, because Sanesfield, no one called her. No, Sanesfield.
I know, it's weird.
I thought it was crazy that we encumbered money, but I think they were doing the same thing, because we were all on the same thing, where we wanted to annual audits. And then they weren't getting done, but we were lucky.
So, so my understanding is that you encumber something, right, so the fiscal year starts to roll around, and somebody says, I'm going to do something for you by the end of the fiscal year, right? And you say, okay, I'm going to encumber this money, right, you encumber it, but that money from the one fiscal year, uh, has to be used within a specific period of time after the fiscal year ends, or it gets loosened up and put into free cash.
I'm not saying it's legal. I'm just saying, I thought, that's what, I've just been told that twenty.
Hey, oh, okay, okay.
No, I was sitting here.
No, 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 I know, I, I get what you're saying.
When I was first told, oh, we have audit money encumbered, I said, how the hell do we have audit money encumbered? But we were repetitively told we did have audit money encumbered, despite the fact that I thought that's not how it works.
Yeah. So. I, I would go back to your statement, is that you believe too much stuff.
Yeah.
Except we, we, but I, I was present for this too, and this has been a repeated thing.
No, no. And I'll, I'll go ask the, I'll go ask the accountant and all of this, because I, I mean, I can look right here, I have the, the budget for whatever's in there, and I could go through the encumbrances, and I don't ever remember seeing them. Because those encumbrances, these encumbrances should be, we're about to dig into another radical, so.
Right, so the other piece of that, though, is that I, I also want to raise the issue of, I, before we make a decision, if, let's assume we got a bond rating, before we choose bond or loan, we also need to look at what the rates are like, and with a bond, we're committing ourselves, there's no like loan prepay, there's no principal prepayment situation, like, like taking that longer loan, so we have to make some decisions about what the relative, I mean, of course, if the bond was one percent, then it would make sense to commit to doing that even without the principal prepayment. But I suspect that's not the case, so we really need to have more information about the various options available to us.
But we might not be eligible.
Well, yes.
We'll, we'll dig into it.
So we won't have to research, because the decision will be made for us.
Well, we still should know the answer ultimately, because even if we're not eligible this year, there's going to come a time where the million dollar thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know why we can't, we don't know where our audit funds are, is because we haven't done an audit.
So it's kind of like, it's a vicious circle.
It's a vicious circle, right, yeah. It really is.
Maybe the audit company has them.
We're going to pay seventeen, we'll pay seventeen thousand to find out where our audit is.
Yeah, right.
Slowly I turn.
So speaking of audit. Speaking of.
More to come.
No, this is, this is. Um, retirement benefit stabilization fund, OPEB. So when I was drafting the annual town meeting warrant this year, I remembered that last year in twenty twenty-three, the whole year, the draft budget had, you know, how it has, where different things are coming out of, we needed to pay seventeen thousand, nine oh six for the retirement group health life insurance benefit. And the, the, the budget had always said it was going to come out of that special stabilization fund. At, on the warrant, it was mistakenly put out of coming out of free cash, no one ever caught it, we signed the warrant, Frankie, you weren't here.
This warrant.
No, in twenty twenty-three.
In twenty twenty-three, right, okay.
And we voted at town meeting to pay the seventeen thousand, nine oh six for the retiree insurance, group health life insurance benefit out of free cash, which was not what the budget spreadsheet showed, and so we ended up short the seventeen thousand, nine oh six from free cash, like unexpectedly. So that was kind of a mistake. But, so this year, when I drafted the town meeting warrant, I said, we got to be really careful, the thirty thousand to fund the ju- the special stabilization fund needs to come from free cash, but the eighteen, six, thirty-five that we actually need to pay the benefit should come from the special stabilization fund, not from free cash. We did that right. But then I did some digging. In twenty twenty-two, we created an OPEB fund, transferred everything from the special stabilization fund, which was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, to OPEB. We never deleted the special stabilization fund, as I understand it, but we created OPEB and moved our hundred and forty from the special stabilization front, fund to OPEB.
The townway incorrect.
But also, but also in twenty twenty-two, which makes no sense, so there's going to be another, we also funded the special stabilization fund and took money out of free cash for the benefit.
So basically, we're.
We, we moved, we moved all the money from one account to another, and then funded the account we just moved it out of, and then took money out of that fund that we just moved it in to pay for the.
But, but in twenty twenty-two, I don't know, because they might, I don't know if that a hundred and thirty-nine reflects the difference between the thirty and the sixteen. Also, none of these years have been audited. So the a hundred and thirty, the a hundred and thirty-nine, I don't know if it reflects the difference, in twenty twenty-one, we did the same thing that we did in twenty-three, where we put money into the stabilization fund from free cash, and we paid the actual benefit from free cash. But in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty, we put the thirty into the special stabilization, and we paid the fourteen from the special stabilization fund, so.
So we paid, in one year, we paid into the fund and we paid out of the fund, but in another.
So in twenty twenty, we paid into the special fund and paid out of the special fund, which is, I think is how it's always supposed to be. In twenty twenty-one, we paid into the fund, and we paid the actual benefit out of free cash. Why the flip-flop, I think it's just an error, I don't think it was a legitimate audit recommendation. But that's all fine, because we're still just working with the special stabilization fund, so these inconsistencies shouldn't be super problematic, just fifteen thousand here and there, going to the wrong place, but ending up.
Where are these? Because, because we're, we're always putting in more than what the actual payment out was, it was always like thirty thousand.
Well, or we were just paying the actual payment out of free cash, so we were just putting away thirty.
Right.
Instead of putting away closer to fifteen.
Right.
But in twenty twenty-two, it gets really confusing, and of course, this is where we haven't been audited, because we created OPEB, transferred all of our special stabilization to OPEB, paid into the special stabilization, paid the actual benefit from free cash, I don't know if that thirty thousand was reflected in the a hundred and thirty-nine or not, like, I don't know if that a hundred and thirty-nine includes thirty, or if it was a hundred and sixty-nine. But that could have been rectified if people kind of did what they were supposed to do. And that a hundred and thirty-nine included that thirty. Twenty twenty-three, we really screwed it, because in twenty twenty-three, we put thirty into the special stabilization fund, which we were supposed to now be doing OPEB, now the special stabilization fund. We paid the seventeen, nine oh six from free cash mistakenly, I mean, it was all mistakenly. So I asked Eric, because then this year, when I thought I had it right, because I hadn't done all the research, we paid, we put thirty into the special stabilization, paid eighteen, six, thirty-five out of the special stabilization. And I said, Eric,
Why do you have stabilization and OPEB?
Well, yeah, no, but I said, Eric, how much is in the special stabilization, and he said, going into town meeting, after today's meeting, there's eleven K because of those two articles that we passed just a few weeks ago. But I'm thinking, what happened to the thirty that we put in special stabilization after last year's town meeting? And what I think happened, without running all the numbers super carefully, is they just took that thirty that was supposed to go in special stabilization and put it in OPEB, which is like, okay, someone's thinking, knows that we have OPEB, knows that it should really be going in OPEB, not special stabilization fund, but also, that's not what we voted at town meeting.
Here's my other question, though, so what, what did we use that, that year to actually pay what was out?
Free cash, because it was a mistake, so that's actually good, the benefit got paid, there's no questions, the benefit got paid.
It's just a question of where the money that we did allocate went.
There's actually been no year where what, how we paid the benefit is questionable.
Okay, tell me that's.
What's questionable is two things, one is this just inconsistency where every other year, we're paying it out of the benefit out of free cash, or paying it out of the money that we're putting away. Then there's this transition to OPEB. And my only concern is, and, and Eric said, once we got audited, it will kind of be clear. But it's a mess.
Yeah, so I talked to Eric too, Eric said he's going to go back, and if there was a mistake made, to your point, where he, or it got put into OPEB when it shouldn't have, he's going to do journal entries and sort of change it back to where, so he's going to go back and look at the warrants. I don't know when you talked to him, I talked to him last Thursday.
These emails are all that I have, and then I kind of left it alone.
Yeah, so I, I talked to him on Thursday, so that's after this, this is what, this is the town meeting, right? Yeah, so I talked to him on Thursday about this as well, so he's going to go through and try and get where it's going.
So I think at the next town meeting in November, the way I see it, there's some amount of money in the special stabilization fund, it might be eleven thousand dollars, it might be forty-one thousand dollars, or it might be seventy, seventy-one thousand. And, and we take that, we transfer to OPEB.
And we get rid of the special stabilization, it's not even an issue anymore.
So that was his recommendation, I asked him, I asked him this past, last week, what his recommendation, his recommendation is to put, is what he said, he said, put the, um, the insurance money actually in the budget and fund, and, and fund OPEB. Okay, so, so, so like put eighteen thousand dollars in the budget, and have it come out in the budget, and then fund for whatever, for free, free cash, OPEB. And then after an audit, what we would do then is we would look at OPEB, because OPEB is an investment vehicle. So we get returns on OPEB, so what happens is, any returns we get on OPEB, we actually get those, we get those, figure out what those dollars are before the annual town meeting and say, when we use those dollars to offset the actual budget dollars.
So we would only, would we start, okay.
It may take us a little while to get it.
So I don't know what our target OPEB balance is, Eric said that will come out in an audit.
Well, but our target OPEB balance, yes, it'll come out, because that OPEB balance is based on the annual dollars we have to spend on ins- on the insurance. So if we're spending eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars on the insurance, then that will determine based upon what the, the, the specific returns might be on the OPEB, that will determine what that balance should be, so if it's, if it needs to be half a million dollars to cover all that, then we, we work towards putting a half a million dollars, and eventually, if, if the line item's still in the budget, and we just sort of offset that with earnings, ideally, what you're trying to do is say, OPEB has, OPEB is making the money, mo- more than enough money to, to pay the, um, to pay the, um, the insurance.
But why, but why don't we, if that's the way to go, why don't we just put the, paying the actual benefit in the operation budget? And right now, we have about two hundred and fourteen thousand set aside, whether it's into special stabilization or OPEB, we have about two hundred and fourteen. If the target balance is two hundred and fifty, it's a very different thing than the target balance being five hundred. But if the target balance is five hundred. But if the target balance is five hundred, why wouldn't we take the interest from OPEB and put it back into OPEB?
You can, you could do that as well. You can do whatever you wanna do with that.
Until it reaches.
And that's, that's the thing. And that's like, if you wanted to get to that, that's what you, that's why he's saying, put the money in the budget. Whether, or, or, you know, if you just wanted to throw free cash, but he's sort of saying, putting it in the budget kinda gets covered annually, it's getting covered. It's getting what, in, in, increases normally gets naturally for the insurance. And you just continue to fund the OPEB, what you wanna fund it, thirty thousand, fifty, whatever you wanna fund it, you know.
Until it gets to the level you need it, and when it can start taking in to.
Yes, and then you just keep, you, through your annual audits, you see what that, where, where your investment is. And right now, the default trustee is.
The treasurer.
The treasurer. So you can put together a whole OPEB committee and all that sort of stuff if you want to, but it's, right now, it's the treasurer.
So, and I kind of just kick myself for things like the drawdown. And this, because I was involved in creating OPEB.
Yes.
And I was just.
Yeah.
Part of the reason I'm staying on the board is in three years, I'm learning now at three years in. Retirement and drawdown.
Yeah.
And.
It's ridiculously complicated with these things.
So, so.
Yeah.
What we needed, and the thing is, I don't wanna wait for an audit to then say, okay, now you need to transfer sixty thousand from special stabilization into OPEB.
I think we have to know that, yeah, it would be great, but you can't, to close it, you have to know the exact amount that's actually in it. And I'm not sure we can establish how much is in it before we.
So one thing that they did in twenty twenty two, is they voted from the special stabilization to OPEB. Da da da, the hundred thirty nine, three, six, ninety six oh three, plus any interest accrued.
Right.
Um, meaning. We don't, I don't know how exact, we need to know. We could potentially vote at town meeting to transfer everything from special stabilization, which is like. Forty one thousand plus any interest accrued.
Right.
But. But I think, one thing that I can almost say with certainty is incorrect, is that.
Wait a minute. What you could say is uncertain.
I can pretty certainly.
This is incorrect.
I could say what's incorrect is that we didn't have zero dollars in the special stabilization for this time meeting. I, I, because very clearly, last year, we put thirty thousand in special stabilization, and we paid the actual benefit out of free cash.
Yeah.
So we should have had thirty thousand.
Yeah.
The other thing that I'm, is just too messy for me to wrap my head around, is in twenty twenty two. So this is another question as you work.
FY or calendar year?
Twenty two, twenty two annual town meeting.
Okay. Or twenty three calendar year.
Yeah, but twenty.
Yeah, but on twenty twenty two annual town meeting, and can you please get this straight with Eric? Cause obviously, he's looking at this annual time meeting, the one before, but also in twenty twenty two. When we went ahead and we transferred a hundred and thirty nine and change from the special sta- stabilization to OPEB. Does that a hundred and thirty nine include the thirty that we put into the special stabilization at that same town meeting?
Yeah.
Um, because we also didn't pay. The benefit out of special stabilization that time, we paid it out of free cash, cause we flipped the coin that year and said to pay it out of free cash. So, anyway.
Yeah, I, I will. I'll follow up, cause I think that, yeah.
If the question is, do we need annual audits, we could.
I don't think there's, I think we're all agree that we're saying we should be having that annual audits anyway. So, now we just have to A, get an auditor, B, get the audits, and see if it's this problem.
Do you know how I found this out? Cause at town meeting, I, I stupidly said. Oh, no, we've only voted fifty thousand once for Northwell money. So in town meeting, I went to quickly verify, we voted fifty thousand once or twice. And then I came across the creation of OPEB.
Ironically, I couldn't figure out, like, sitting next to you, you, you made some comment about, oh no, OPEB, but I'm like. Why, why didn't you certainly look at that now? You know why?
Well, that's the second annual town meeting in a row, where before, after we voted on it, but before the end of annual town meeting, I realized we completely screwed up the retirement. And both years. Like last year, even after we knew we screwed it up, we never realized. That it was all, as much as we screwed it up, we screwed it up even more by not just doing it from OPEB.
It is interesting, because I did get a phone call from Maynard Forbes.
Yes.
North of Houston.
About the drawdown?
Or about OPEB, about OPEB.
About OPEB?
Yep, yep, he called me up, n- north of Austin, right? How long? Uh, ri- right after you put the, right after you put the, um, the agenda up.
For this meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, for that, what did he say?
He asked me what it was about.
He's worried about not getting his retirement money. Well, this, retirement money's coming, don't worry about it.
Cause it was funny, he said, Maynard Forbes, I'm like, Maynard Forbes, it's deep south.
Well, so I.
I'm like, what street do you live on? He goes, I live north of Boston. Like, never heard of that street before.
Well, I had, I, I had my father ask him about the drawdown.
Right.
Um, so I didn't know if that also might have been his interest.
It was like, it was like the day after, or, it was, uh, it was Monday he called, so it was yesterday.
I can't believe he was looking at our.
Well, just so everyone knows, that we're trying to do the retirement benefit at as stable as possible, and that's what OPEB is.
Yeah.
We're trying to make it bulletproof.
Yeah.
Just some hiccups.
That's the only way, but we just gotta get, it's, it's a trustee, it's a, it's an investment vehicle, and it's a stabilize, stabilizes the payment.
Yeah.
With retirees.
If we can get that.
If we can get there.
Okay.
But we're gonna get that.
Um, moving on, quick change to senior tax work off the abatement program. Um.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward.
So, so it is, uh, just to clarify, from what I understand, I'm still, still kind of finding some stuff, but Pat Norris sent me some information, and it's. Two thousand dollars and a hundred and twenty five hours.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a comp, it's, you get to a hundred and twenty five hours, and you get two thousand dollars.
And currently, the limit was fifteen hundred.
Yeah, a hundred hours with fifteen hundred.
Okay. So I would move to increase the maximum property tax abatement available to seniors to perform volunteer services. To two thousand dollars slash a hundred and twenty five hours. Is there any other discussion on that? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval.
So I'll put some information on the website.
Yeah.
There's really only three people right now who are active. The question really has come up, is what is there outside of the swap shop for people to do, volunteer? So, that's the question. Because there's three, there's, there's four people that are listed up there, but three people are active right now.
I mean, I think if different departments come up with things, like, it's worked really pretty well for this swap shop, I think.
Yeah.
Um, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I don't know if the library ever uses tax work off abatement.
I think they do, don't they?
Senior volunteer.
No, no, nobody puts in their time, since library.
They just volunteer.
They just, I think they just volunteer, volunteer.
Right.
I mean, I suppose we could make.
I'm the one who should monitor. Five hundred hours.
Hard master.
So, maybe hard master, but, I mean, the other thing, Nikki, at, you can let the library know that this is a program that the town does. Which I don't know how familiar they are or not, and it could work out well, so.
Yeah, I, I, now that I, I know what the amount is, I can, I can bring that up and see if this, if it would make any difference for anything.
I think it's a good thing that they don't offer stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of towns open, don't they?
Yes, it's like, not, we're not unique, but I think it's.
And, and, that's a, that's a damn decent amount.
Yeah.
Think I'll sign up. And so if I can take my taxes, then I can do my volunteer work.
You'd count a hundred and twenty five hour, you think you'd reach a hundred and twenty five hour sort of books?
Yes.
Yes. I knew that was coming.
In one week?
No, but I was down there, I, I missed Sunday.
Yeah.
I reckon right now, I'm behind, so I gotta get down there every day, and I'm trying to get down there like.
I'm gonna bring you another box of books. I don't want you to have nothing to do.
All right, do we have any?
Just give me a week before you bring any down, okay? I've just got a bunch of.
Are there any town administrator updates?
Just have a few, the elevator isn't working. It's out of service, but it's not the elevator itself, it's the room, that the, that is the issue itself. There's, uh, um, basically cosmetic things that need to take place. So I'm working with, uh, Jim, I talked to Jim, he had, he took a few days off because his wife was having some surgery, I guess. So, uh, we're gonna work at finding somebody to come in and fix that stuff. A little confusing as to why it's happening all of a sudden, because some of the cosmetic stuff has been around for years.
Sure. Somebody noticed it, and then it had.
I guess. Um, that also, the ironic thing out of all of it is when they came to do the ADA self evaluation. It was the same day they came an hour after they shut down the, uh, the elevator. So, it's kinda funny.
That's bad for.
So, it was like, okay, but they're, they're, they came back, they've done the ADA self evaluation. For the buildings, for the parks, I do have to get in touch with the, um, a group of people to be, a three, three or four people, just to sit. Be available for when that, um, uh, assessment comes back for review. And they'll be reviewed maybe once or twice in the course of two weeks, and then come in front of the town, the, the select board, so. Um, the other thing is, uh, the conservation commission asked if it would be okay. At their next meeting, um, because they will be discussing Hume, uh, to have town council present.
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
We're all, we all agree, yeah.
The point is, I mean.
I believe it's Thursday.
It's Thursday?
Yeah.
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 I think in a situation like this, they have a, and I, I, I think we've tried to communicate this, they have a unlimited. Access to town council, so that's because.
Yeah, yeah, she, I, she's.
She's trying to prevent things.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I.
She asked, she asked for Donna's number today, I gave it to her, and she sent me a text message and said, just in case you know, I spent fifteen minutes, sixteen minutes talking with her.
Yeah.
So I was like, okay.
Don't, don't nickel and dime legal bills, because geez, it, it's so much more expensive on the other end.
So the question is, we're, we can do it remote, but it won't be necessarily a remote meeting. Cause we can have them, what I mean?
The council can hear remotely without the, without the.
Do understand what you're saying, and with COVID, those laws have changed, and sometimes those orders were extended. Because back before COVID, there were different rules about having a physical forum present.
But if you have a physical forum.
It'd be the council.
I understand.
Right, yeah.
So now you can call people and don't meet it. And if you're gonna have a physical forum present, and you're just gonna call in some people, you don't need necessarily post it as a hybrid. Um, my thought has always been, why not? If you're go, if you know you're gonna have some people on Zoom, why not open it up to the public on Zoom?
Hmm.
That's, I guess, not, that's not a legal perspective, that's just a.
You're so.
That's my own perspective.
Cause I can leave that up to the concom, they'll make that decision, and I can ask them.
Yeah, I would just, like, my.
I can give them your opinion.
But it hasn't been, I mean, if they didn't already post it, and it's Thursday, they can't change the posting.
Yeah.
What day is the meeting?
Thursday.
In the afternoon, I think.
Oh.
Yeah. You can always call someone into a meeting and not, we can call them in remotely.
And you can also, I mean, they could do it just voice on the phone, but I think it would be better to have first. Like, they're, yeah, seeing things is different than just hearing them.
Mm-hmm. And my only last thing is, uh, uh, something that, uh, an email came around today, up in Williamstown. Um, they had eighteen storm grates stolen.
What the?
Eighteen, cost them, cost them fifty six hundred dollars, according to the email.
What do you do with a storm grate?
According to the email, they're, they're not, uh, they're not even valuable scrap, reminders from what they said.
So it's just like vandalism?
Yeah, so they're, so I, I let.
Why would you bother?
I let Jim know, just in case.
It must be a lot of money, cause they're very heavy.
Yeah, it's fifty, fifty, it's gonna cost them fifty six hundred dollars. I thought that was just kinda interesting, that someone stole storm grates.
Can you imagine what's involved in pulling the storm grating out?
Yeah.
That's not trivial. What were they doing? With a chain to the back of a truck and yanked it out, right? It's easier. And it's gotta be like, isn't it embedded in the, like?
Sometimes, yeah. But I thought that was a mess.
That is crazy.
That's it for me.
Um, great. Um.
Minute.
Yeah, oh, just to, just to wrap up, cause I, I'm, I'm sorry, really wrap up eight and nine, the audit and the retirement benefit. Rogers, you're gonna work with finding an audit firm?
Yes.
And then, for the retirement benefit, I guess, you'll work with Eric and. I think if Eric can say with certainty, and maybe consult town council as necessary. This is what happened, this is what went wrong, we can rectify it here and now, rather than waiting for an audit, let's do that. And then, part of it is, might be journal entries, and part of it will probably be a vote in November to transfer.
Yeah.
And to close the stabilization.
I don't know if we need to close.
I, I think the best thing to do is to close it, because then that mistake can never happen again.
Unless we can.
No one in the future can make a move if it's not there.
Unless your point, because we don't know if it's in there, we can't close again. Maybe, could, could, can you vote to not use it?
Well, I, I think the ideal thing would be, find out how much is in it.
Yeah.
Empty it.
Yeah.
Close it.
Yeah.
Gone. Like, the safest plan is to empty it and close it, so it's no longer even an issue, and the error can't be made.
If we, if we tie it to the library loan, I think maybe, we'll always make sure that we remember.
Thanks, she says. Um, okay.
Uh, right?
I'll remember that. Just give me a, a real number, though.
Just remember, it needs going to OPEB, not the special stabilization. Okay.
Always invest your money and make an, make some money on it.
Minutes, we had four twenty four.
Can.
Yeah, yeah.
Before you do that, can we, can we skip to number fourteen?
Yes, if you have a comment, question.
Okay, I have comments and questions. And, you know, watching you work here today, and, and like I always do, I really don't wanna say this, but I have to, okay? I was very upset, disappointed, embarrassed. With members of the select board at town meeting. Because you were not prepared, and I don't know why you aren't prepared, cause you all know all this crap. You were not prepared to answer the questions about the fire company.
Yeah, I, I definitely felt like I dropped the ball. Yeah, I completely agree with you.
Inexcusable, it's like, I'm sitting there, and, and it was, it would really, could have been easily answered, and, 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 and shut down.
I, I don't even know why I dropped that ball. I wish that I could tell you, because I, you're right, I know all the numbers, and I just.
See, did you notice I have one of these little things with me, so things I wanted to make sure I was covered on, and things I wanted to say. They were right there, so I didn't have to go pummeling through a computer. I know computers are wonderful for a lot of things, but not for something like that, cause we have right here, it's there. And it's maybe a pink little marking on the side that says, that's for the fire company, that's for this. I mean, that one, you knew that was the one that I was gonna ask.
I know, and I, I thought I was prepared, and clearly, whatever bad moon rose that day. It, it just wiped me out, that, like, never happens. I, I've done so much public speaking, I don't think I've ever dropped a ball that. I felt like it was like, I was involved on my foot. It was terrible.
Um, and I, so the, other night, I'm ready to go up to bed, and I'm going. You know, I wonder why I think of this as like, you know, eleven thirty at night, I'm ready having a nap, I want that thing. And I'm like, I wonder what, like, the payments have been to the fire company over the past years. So, I mean, in the last couple of years, we've paid them seventeen thousand for rent and thirty thousand for capital improvements.
But none of that capital has been spent.
Been spent, it's just accrued.
It's sitting in the warrants. It's in the general ledger.
It, it's accrued, but it hasn't been spent.
It, but it, it, it was, that was. So.
That's right.
That was forty seven thousand dollars, basically, right? Going back, like, eight years, the first year they paid it, which I think was fiscal, fiscal twenty seventeen. It was, that was forty seven thousand dollars.
What the, the.
That's what they paid for. Firehouse utilities and rent or something, it's listed at. And I just looked at a couple, like, you know, just a folder of paper. My father was a printer, so I have paper, and, um. It's, it's like, it hasn't gone up. It's been the same mess, so going to sixty thousand dollars, it hasn't gone up. If it was forty seven thousand dollars eight years ago, I think sixty thousand dollars is, is not even a fair increase.
And, and I think that's.
There's a couple, there's a lot of different ways to look at it, cause.
Well, I know that, but I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, this is what I'm thinking is, as what you say at the town meeting, it, it is not a problem. And then.
I, I, I own that I dropped the ball.
Uh, you, you, I, you did the compensation, I did the lease agreement, cause Tom brought up the question about why it was that way.
He, he, it was, it was, it was both, and, and he had his use. We're giving you a pass.
No, well, no, I mean, the, the fact is, you know, the reason Roger and I talked, that there's someone who looked up their last tax returns. And that cost them approximately forty five thousand dollars to keep the place running. But through the meetings Roger and I had, they need to do some things, or that, things have been put off. You know, and, you know, a couple of years there, they raised, they didn't raise any money by the tax.
And that, but that, and that's another thing that has nothing to do with you. You know, we have the friends, the library trustee can attend the meetings. We don't have any voting rights. We don't have any voting rights, some, but the friends say, and we give them a wish list for things we'd like to spend money on, you know, so much on programs and and, and repair work and things like that. And, and then we, you know, ask them if we can have them, if they approve that and then they say, that's fine, but we don't wanna approve this and we want more here. And, and, but that's up to them. And, and so they don't do that. I mean, they're they're, as far as I can see, they're um nonprofit is run by the same people who are the people who are running the company. And I think that is some sort of conflict or something.
No, there, we've talked to the, you know, I have had lengthy conversations, but the lawyers are very familiar with that. So that's why the lease agreement has to be very specific on what we approved the capital for.
Yeah.
You know, because it can't, you know, it has to benefit the town by doing things to the building. You know, having a floor that's even and doing radiant heat is important for our, our fire department employees in, in general. So those are, you know, that's where that whole capital thing comes and it's.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, not, you're not, not complaining, I'm just saying, you know, you could have said.
You could say, yeah, there's a conflict of interest, you know, but it's, it's the same issue in almost all these municipalities.
Well, and also they're not, they don't make a salary from the fire company. They.
Yeah, there's no tax.
No, they're so upset, there's no financial.
So, so you had, did you have a warrant that said they got forty seven thousand dollars?
It was a warrant.
Where did you see that? You said you had a piece of.
Yeah, do you have any?
The old warrant.
I can show you my old, my old warrants. We bring a whole fire.
Yeah, the, the fire company, in fact, they, they, they're, the papers I sent you said nobody can profit from it.
Yeah.
But the question, what I'm trying to get at is that that forty seven thousand dollars that she's talking about doesn't, is just straight up, it's not seventeen plus thirty because we've only been doing it for thirty or three years.
Right.
Just the number. Yeah, and it's a good question, why it changed, that would change.
Yeah, and I didn't look at all of them. I only looked like, um, yeah, those ones are better, I thought.
It was silvered in the.
You gonna be here tomorrow?
Yeah.
Cause it's Ken's name on the lease.
Have something else to bring down?
Uh anytime soon. I don't think, I don't think.
Well, I don't think.
All right, I'll give you the forty seven if it doesn't work for capital.
I, I don't know, I wasn't.
Anyway, okay. Anyway, anything else?
I'm about spilled, no.
Okay.
Oh, and, and also the compensation, we'll, we'll look at that. Uh the year before, I think it was the year before, it's something, it was in fiscal, fiscal, they gave fiscal sixteen, it was like ca- came up to eighty nine thousand five hundred, it was for calls for training, I think that's how it was listed. And it came up to eighty nine five. So if last year it was a hundred and twenty, that was no increase. That was barely covering cost of living. It's this year that's the jump that had to be explained.
But and, but it's, it's a big jump this year and the big jump is in part because we need to pay them for the hours it's gonna cost to figure out what the heck we need to do.
Right, and, and you know, and if you have this extra fifty in there, that's fine and things went up, because they had to go up. Anyway, that's all. I'm not managing.
I, I'm sorry, I, I was mad at myself, so you know, trust me, you can't be any harder on me than I am on myself. I, I just, I was like, oh god. But once you've done it, you can't undo it.
Um what's the status of the office assistant?
I'm waiting to hear back from um the Collins Center with a um transcription.
Okay.
I've given them all that stuff. I think it's, uh, she's had it for a week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, she can be hard to get a hold of.
The second and the eighth? Four two and four eight, what's the status?
Working, working on, you guys talk a lot when it comes to the budget.
I am gonna try to do auditor.
You want me to see if I can download that four two for you?
I know, Roger, I can do it. So I use a transcription service sometimes.
Auditor is not nearly as bad as the, the one that's actually on.
Go to meeting, no, and I just use it not to make the minutes, but to help.
Yeah.
And.
Saves a lot of time, you listen to it longer than three.
I thought I was gonna get to four two and I didn't. I did get to the, I, like I said, I think I can do the week to week, the going back and doing a three hour meeting is tough, but with the transcript, I know it's past the limit, but I will do it. Um, yeah.
Sorry, I'm not meaning to bug you, I just wanna make sure.
No, it's totally fair. I've said for like three weeks now I would do it and I haven't, so.
All right, so four twenty-four?
Um, yeah, so I think the ones that we do have to look at are four twenty-four and four thirty. We just got final edits in at five o'clock. At five oh seven and five twelve.
Was that already for?
So Susan and I have versions, because Susan emailed them.
Right.
And I have it.
Yeah, I printed out her version, I didn't make it.
Um, so you printed out her version?
Person, yeah, and your version.
For four thirty or for one?
Four thirty.
Okay, then we have, we all have Susan's version, because Susan's version is the right, right version.
And it, it's not like there was a lot, like four twenty-four, there's I think like one word or something?
So did you send me a four, you, you sent me four thirty, right?
Yeah, I drafted.
And I did vote twenty-four and thirty.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Edens, it just came in at.
They were close to town, yeah.
Oh, alright, nice.
Um.
I, so basically the only change I made was on what page is it, page one of the twenty twenty, uh, the twenty four, four twenty-four. Item two.
Yeah.
Down towards the end in the sentence that read, letter from Massachusetts Fish and Wildlife that pointed out some potential negative effects of the drawdown was how I wrote it down. That's the only thing I had on that four twenty-four one.
Yeah. Lake Garfield drawdown documents, Mass Works grant program documents, I have those. Okay, um, are we all good with the April twenty-fourth minutes?
I moved to approve the April twenty-fourth minutes as amended.
One second and I'll call a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
And yes, so that those minutes are approved as amended of four twenty-four and we'll flip to four thirty. If we can do a two in one meeting, it gets us ahead.
So I had a couple on that. Let's see, discuss Lake Garfield drawdown, I am the third line, had prepared a working model which showed how the dam work, works plural. Uh, and then the second one is Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office of Dam Safety? Cause it can't be Office Dam Safety, Office and Dam Safety doesn't make sense.
Applying to Massachusetts to MIPA Office and Dam Safety. I thought they were two separate entities.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong. Roger, do you have an opinion?
Uh, no, I'm not, I'll leave you with them at all, to be honest.
Let me have one, I remember Jim Hunt talking about it. You had the dam safety group in the city.
Right, but I wonder what, but it probably has.
Oh, it is a separate office. It's called Office of Dam Safety.
I thought.
Office of Dam, oh, and, so maybe and the Office of Dam Safety.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, that's it.
And then. Yep, okay, and I actually have all those documents, so this can go up tonight.
Okay. Move to approve the minutes of four thirty as amended.
Second, and we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so those are approved.
So um, speaking about um, we spent just a second on um meetings, posting meetings and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. Please.
So we're trying to, Chris and I are trying to um come to like I think I'm gonna make a list of, try to get a list of people who have access and can post their own meetings.
Yeah.
Because we've run into, he's, he ran into some problems with, with one of the departments. It just wasn't quite right what was there. And so he actually talked to them and they're, he's gonna start doing their meetings and all that sort of stuff.
Who? I think there's me.
Yeah.
And I do it well.
Yeah.
Usually.
And David does it for the bylaw review, because I don't think that's been a problem either.
Here's my problem. Remember, I made an agenda posting policy?
Yeah.
And then I revised it.
Yeah.
And one thing that happens is when people have their agenda as a PDF, that's fine. And then when the email blast goes out, it doesn't say anything. It says concom meeting and what's the point of an email blast going out when it doesn't tell you the date or time or location?
Yeah.
But this is how it's always worked and the same thing for minutes. Like Select Board has always put our minutes in, in the body of the text. But some minutes are a PDF or something and you get an email that says council on aging minutes and that's all it says.
Yeah.
So we're.
Some people send them, it, it's really easy to, to take a Word document and pop it in and do it.
Yes.
But it's, it's, it's easy to, to copy and paste the PDF, but it's just a little bit time consuming going, cause you gotta clean it up. That's what happens. Cause you know, like you lose the links, if there's a, if there's like a, a link or something that goes somewhere, you gotta manually put that in and sort of do some stuff, but. But I agree with you, it's good, cause it, cause what happened to me the other day is the other thing too that happens is sometimes you're supposed, you, you have your meeting agenda and you're supposed to, you put your meeting minutes in and you're supposed to relate your meeting minutes to an agenda and for some reason sometimes the meeting agenda just doesn't show up.
I don't think we need to do that.
And so.
I never knew about that and I don't, have you, has anyone here ever used the function where agendas and minutes are related to each other?
The only time it helps is when you go to the minutes, it actually has the agenda right in there, cause it relates.
I never knew.
And I, I will admit that I, when I do minutes for like the OSRP, I put the agenda at the beginning. I just pull the agenda from the website and I plop it down in there and clean it up to fit my, my style and that it's right at the beginning of the minutes.
So.
But realistically, a lot of times people don't actually follow the minutes exactly.
Yeah, so it happened every day.
The agenda, that's.
The other day, because I was trying to put minutes in for the Renewable Energy Working Group and I couldn't find the minutes, I couldn't find the agenda that it was associated with. So I kept trying and I would do it and I would hit save. Every time I hit save and close, it pushed out another thing that said there's a renewable energy. So there's like five of them that came out, so anyway, I think we're, we're just trying to sort of streamline it a little bit.
So, but here's one thing that could streamline is in the policy I have highlighted here to include time and location in the body. Because even though we've input time elsewhere, when the email blast goes out, totally legal to not put time in there, but it's this awkward email blast that says, there's a Select Board meeting on May fifth at Town Hall and here's the agenda. But you don't know what happens.
Good luck.
Right. And you can go to the website and you can find it, but I feel like every single one that gets an email blast, it's one thing if it says absolutely nothing and if you just have to go to the website for everything. If, I would love to resolve that, but that's been a years long thing. I'm not so worried about that, but if it's gonna send an email blast with the location and agenda, it might as well have the time. Um, the other thing we could say is all agendas go in, in the body there for the purpose of the email.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Now, part of me looks, when you go to a lot of other towns, Select Board agendas, they're usually a PDF. PDF has some really nice things about it. The formatting doesn't change. Sometimes you post an agenda and instead of being like one, two, three, four, five, it goes one, 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 one. Because this software is so weird, Civic Plus.
It is.
So I've often thought about doing a PDF to avoid the janky formatting.
Yeah. It takes a little bit, you have to work on it. It doesn't take a ton, because it's not like there's a, a whole bunch of stuff to do. So, cause most people have like two agenda items, so you know.
So what if for the purposes of kind of standardizing things and getting good email blasts, we kind of follow a policy of always putting the agenda in the body text?
I can talk to Chris about that.
And then it has to have location and time in there as well and it needs to have the date in the title.
Hmm.
Um, also.
The agenda, that's what we have to do.
But the, but the other thing Chris could do is if there's anyone who is still posting agendas that isn't Chris or you or Laura, cause I forgot Laura, they should have this policy.
Yeah.
Because then it standardizes it.
Is that part, was that, was that policy on the, in, in our?
It's not a real policy.
Is that that thing you, you gave to us and you have the different?
And then I made another one, but I just made it. It's not an official adopted policy.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a procedure.
Yeah, procedures.
Or official procedure.
Um, because then it standardizes it. It would be nice to get, so that when the email blast goes out, all the information is right there.
Yeah.
Even if we don't legally have to do that, it seems like the right thing to do, but.
No, I agree, that's good. Okay, I'll talk, I'll talk to him about that, at least, at least we can start by putting the agendas. If somebody gives, if someone sends us a P, if someone sends us a PDF of it or they send us a Word document, we'll just have to copy and paste.
Copy and paste in the body, make sure it has location, time and agenda in the body, make sure it has date in the title.
Yep.
And then when that blast goes out, it's all elsewhere away. The, you know what's crazy about that software? The first couple of times I posted minutes, it would only link to the documents that I attached to the minutes. You have to deselect the box for it to link to the minutes rather than the document.
Yeah, it's weird.
Attached. You would.
It's a strange, it's a strange animal.
And that, the way, the reason that exists is because if someone wants to upload their minute as a PDF.
Okay, well.
But then I wanna just attach document, so you go to click on minutes of May fifth and you just get the document, one of the, one of the random documents.
One of the random documents, only one.
But you approve of the thirtieth, right?
We did.
Yes.
As in?
Yeah. Oh, also Roger, quickly before we adjourn, if you don't mind, I have down for, under TA items, there was the elevator being broken and stolen drainage gates and I'm missing one thing.
Um, Town Council, uh, con, con.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll look them up.
Yeah. Cause I'll do this for you, sweetie. Okay. Um, is there a motion adjourn?
Oh, just one, one quick heads up. Um, I, it, this, there's not, like, this is not an official thing, but it happened today and while I'm thinking of it, I think it'll fall to us to do this. So, one thing that came out of the OSRP and apparently also from the master plan is that there are quite a number of people in town that would like to see a dog park. There's also a bunch of people that like, no, I don't want a dog park, whatever. There seems to be some interest in the dog park. And at today's OSRP discussion, as we're talking about action items and goals, one thing that was sort of proposed was that what we may need to do is get, uh, see if some of the people who are in order to have anything happen, it's going to take some people with the dedication to actually investigate what would this cost? Where could we put it? How would it be maintained? What would it cost to maintain it and all that other stuff? And it's a pretty big project. At which point we, we need to have that information before we could even bring it to town meeting to say, is this something town wants to do? There seems to be a number of, seem to be a number of people that are interested in it, but I just want us to think about how we would find those people that might wanna take the next step of actually investigating. I, I am putting right out there that I, I am not a proponent of dog parks, so I am not going to be one of those people.
Our zoning makes it so that just about everybody has a yard, that the dog can come visit. We're not, we're not in the city.
I don't like farming, man, so much.
We're not in the city where there's no place to bring your dogs. I just don't get it. And then if you wanna bring your dogs, we, sometimes we like to take our dogs on walk with other people's dogs, so we meet up at one of the many public trails in town.
That presupposes that you have friends and that you talk to them, you see.
But why would you go to a dog park? Cause you're gonna meet people there to talk, are the dogs?
So in part, I, I think in part, I think again, I don't like dog parks, right? But my experience with people who like dog parks are that they wish to, they don't necessarily have friends who have dogs. They want to, they think of it as socializing their dog. A lot of times they don't have fencing on their property. And they wanna let their dog run off lead and they want a safe place to do that. And rather than fencing their own property, they, they want someplace else to take the dump.
The, the problem is if their dog isn't on voice command and they want, but they wanna take it off leash, but it isn't, you can't do voice command. The dog place sounds like, the dog park sounds like the worst place to take it. Because it shouldn't have voice command, if it's gonna be off.
Well, one of the reasons I don't like dog parks is because the problem isn't the dogs, it's the dog owners. And there are too many bad dog owners. This is why I do not go to dog parks, right? This is why, but there, there seem to be, like, I know Agmont has one that's very popular. Um, West Stockbridge is apparently about to start building one. Um.
And two pavilions.
Two pavilions?
Two pavilions, you can see.
Missed this.
Including engineering, one for about thirty and one for about fifty.
Where, where are they putting it?
One at the Town Hall and one at the, like pond or lake, I think.
So their community center?
Yeah, I forget where the other one was. Including engineering, one for about thirty, one for about fifty. And the fifty is a little bit smaller than.
How did I miss this? What paper was it in?
Eagle, the eagle, yeah.
Like when?
It must have been a month ago.
Two, two weeks ago, I remember something like that, yeah.
I missed that, whatever. I'm just gonna look it up. That's ridiculous.
Including engineering.
So I I, you know, I don't know. I personally am not a proponent, but if the, if for all these people wanna have it, I'm just saying for that to happen, somebody needs to step forward, because it's pretty clear, nobody at this table is interested in taking this on.
Well, we can ask Frank.
No, I didn't have to lose face, but it was.
Yeah, we're trying to. I'd like to know, the thing, you know, if someone come up and said they wanted to build, I'd be willing to listen, but you know, people say I want this, you know?
So Julie, where's it gonna be?
You know, it's, you know.